All right, let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your incredible blessings, Lord, that you have just poured upon us. We thank you, Lord, for this time tonight. We ask for your wisdom in every decision that is made, and we give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Lord, would you read us some foot--
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will call the September 4th City of Vero Beach City Council meeting to order. Jim, if you do, roll call, please.
Dr. Zudans?
Here.
Colonel Young?
Here.
Councilwoman Moss?
Present.
Vice Mayor Stites?
Present.
Mayor Howell?
Present. Thank you. Let's get the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes that they want to make to the minutes?
I have none. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Move on to the agenda now. Additions, deletions, and adoptions. I do have one suggestion, and y'all might have some suggestions, too. We have a couple of-- we have three parking discussions within the agenda. One's going to be by Mr. Monte Falls, one by Mr. Caesar Mastrata-- sorry, Caesar. And then we've got another one back here under Old Business, and it's B1 after 4. I think that should actually be a 5, but I propose we move that one up to somewhere or maybe after Mr. Mastrata is speaking.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So we keep the parking all together.
Mm-hmm.
Does everyone think okay?
Yeah, that's very wise.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you, Conner. Any other changes to the agenda?
Well, I would only just-- we-- this conduct of council members, it was-- wasn't that discussed last time? Are we doing that again?
We actually--
It was deferred.
It was deferred.
Oh, it was removed?
Okay. Did the agenda change? I must have been looking at earlier.
The only other thing that I would say is we might want to move the Dodger Town, so that that appears all together. Right now, it's number 8. It's under City Manager Matters, and it's also under number 4. So maybe just move it forward so that everything's together on Dodger Town.
One of those--
Makes sense.
Sir?
I think that makes sense, by keeping it all together.
I just-- my only-- my only holdback on that is I wonder if the second part under Mr. O'Connor's matters is going to be an extended period of time.
Well, you'd want to have it forward, because if we wait till the end of the evening--
I think a lot of people are here to speak on it also.
Okay.
And the counties here, you know, just to be respectful of the county's time.
But does anybody else-- I mean, the problem is, you want to move it up there? Does anybody agree with that?
No, it's fine with me.
Okay. So we're going to move B1, which I thought should be B5, to just under Mr. Caesar Mastrata's presentation, and then we're going to move number 8 from the City Managers Matters to-- Help me out here--
Yes, it's number 4.
To number 4. Thank you.
Under Dodger Town. Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make a motion.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Great, so this time, we'll move on to proclamations, the first of which is Hunger Action Month, except for September 2018. Who has that?
I've got that. So Ms. Rebecca Rodriguez, please come on up forward, along with Sherri and her son Tristan Zeigfried. Whereas hunger and poverty remain issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of Florida, the Treasure Coast, and the city of Vero Beach. And whereas the city of Vero Beach is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our city and to provide additional resources that citizens of Vero Beach need. And whereas the city of Vero Beach is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank and educating people about the role and importance of food banks and other hunger relief organizations in addressing hunger and bringing attention to the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas food banks and hunger relief organizations across the country, including the Treasure Coast Food Bank, coordinated Hunger Action Day on September 13, 2018, and will continue to host numerous events throughout the month of September to shed light on this important issue and encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby recognize September 2018 as Hunger Action Month in the city of Vero Beach and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. City of Vero Beach.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Sherri Zeigfried. I'm the Director of Client Services for the Treasure Coast Food Bank. On behalf of our CEO, staff, board members from the Treasure Coast Food Bank, we'd like to thank you for proclaiming September Hunger Action Month. Here in Indian River County, we provide services to over 20,000 families, seniors, children, and families in need. This past year, we provided about 40 million meals to those in need throughout the Treasure Coast. That includes Okeechobee. We have over 300 partner agencies that provide food directly to the community. And if you go to our website, subhunger.org, you can find out all of the things that you can do for Hunger Action Month. For every dollar donated to the Treasure Coast Food Bank, we're able to provide eight meals to families in need here on the Treasure Coast. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Zeigfried. Who's the fellow with the big, strong arms down there?
(laughter)
(applause)
There you go.
Yeah.
Good job, buddy.
There we go.
Yo, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
He's got it down pat.
Sorry.
Like a regular Olin Wells. Was that his name?
I'll have to get Bob and give him some of those. (laughter)
Thank you very much. Thank you. By the way, I didn't think this through tonight. I appreciate the tie.
Thanks.
I wore blue with it. I just want you to know that doesn't mean that I'm a U.S. fan. Thank you for the tie. Next one is Suicide Awareness Month.
I gotta-- before I start, I gotta do the Gator comment.
Oh, well.
Which team looked the best on this past--
I know.
All right, yeah, that's right.
It's embarrassing.
On a serious note, Lisa Reimer.
Hi.
Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 12.8 minutes, with close to 45,000 reported deaths by suicide in our country during 2016. And whereas in our country, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for 10- to 34-year-olds and is the 10th-leading cause of death for people of all ages. And whereas in Indian River County, there were 34 reported suicides in 2017. And whereas each person's death by suicide intimately affects at least six other people with over 200,000 newly bereaved each year. And whereas far too many Floridians die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby designate September 2018 as Suicide Awareness Month and urge the residents to learn how they may help, because suicide prevention is everyone's business. City of Vero Beach.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm Lisa Reimer. I'm a Communications Officer for New Horizons. You know, I was a journalist in this area for almost 18 years before I ever even heard of New Horizons. Our main campus is in Fort Pierce, but we serve 14,000 children and adults across the Treasure Coast in all four counties and every year, regardless of their ability to pay. We have two offices right here in Vero. We have one on 82nd Avenue. And then our learning center, we are an Impact 100 recipient. It's cheaper to provide mental health services than to pay for the emergency room visits, the arrests, and incarcerations by people who need that help. And unfortunately, the biggest obstacle to getting the help that they need is stigma. So what we're really trying to do during this month is to raise awareness about QPR. That's the CPR of mental health. Question, persuade, and refer. So have the number 211 or our hotline, which is 772-468-3909, at your fingertips. When you ask somebody how they're doing, look up from your screen, from your phone. Look them in the eye. If you know that they've undergone some marked change in their character, like they're effusively happy or depressed when they're, you know, not usually that way, or you know that they have had a loss, you may want to ask a few more questions. Really ask. And then comes the hard question. If they're not doing well, are you thinking of killing yourself? Like, nobody wants to ask that, but it's a necessary question. They have so much information, data, about people leaving signs before they actually take their own life. So question, then refer, and stay with them until they get the help that they need. New Horizons has the only mobile crisis unit on the Treasure Coast. It's absolutely free. It works 24/7, 365 days a year. We will come out to a school, to a hospital, to a home. We will call the police if we need it, but we will help de-escalate a crisis situation and then prescribe something, a plan, to go forward. So I just want to say thank you again for helping raise awareness. Having an open conversation is the beginning of reducing stigma.
We should be thanking you.
Oh.
Yeah. I visited your facility last year, and y'all do a great thing, great service to our community.
Thank you very much.
And just for public information, so 211, if you-- if someone calls 211, they will actually have a trained suicide prevention expert--
Person answered, yes.
And have the resources to actually talk to these people and help them.
But 211 is its own entity. So we actually work hand-in-hand with many of the agencies. For instance, if you call 911, Vero Beach Police, or the Sheriff's Office, or the Fire District, they will interface with New Horizons as well. And just one more thing, you know, this past year, we just celebrated our first anniversary of the opioid task force, a Treasure Coast-wide collaborative with the department, the Police Department here and the Sheriff's Department here. And, you know, those things overlap. You know, the top leading cause of death for children 10 to 24 is accidents. The second is suicide. So, you know, where you draw that line can be debated. So anyway, we're providing help, and we're working together with the agencies that also provide help.
Thank you, Ms. Reimer.
Thank you.
(applause)
Oh, we also have the Race for Recovery, September 29. Join now, come out and run, so--
Where's that?
It's at Matt's Stadium, and I'm going to leave some things with Pammy. So we encourage you to form a team.
Well, it's so nice to see you.
Thanks.
Are you ready for your call, sir?
(laughter)
Thank you. Nice to see you. Okay, so we'll move on to the staff, consultant, special reports, and information items. This will be item number 1, beachside parking information for City Council, presented by Mr. Monte Falls, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor Howell.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Zudans?
Pass those down.
Yep. I'm Monte Falls, Director of Public Works, and I just got a few brief things to go over and then try to answer some questions that you might have. But just to let everybody know, in 2007, the city commissioned a study from a consultant, not just to look at parking, but to look at a lot of things as part of the vision plan process. But it did have one section that focused on parking, and it made some recommendations. And we've implemented a lot of those. When this study was done, there were 702 parking spaces on the Beachside Business District, and that's the map I just gave you, and I'll pull that up again. Since that time, there is now 755. So we have added 52 spaces over on the-- in that Beachside Parking District. The bulk of those came about when we did the Humiston Park Project and the Sexton Plaza Project. Those resulted in about 30 spaces being added. We have then shoehorned in some spaces where we could optimize some space. We've taken away some small planters, and now we've got 755 spaces over there. One of the suggestions that the study made was to look at center aisle parking on Cardinal Drive and Ocean Drive. Cardinal Drive has received a lot more interest. The consultant's report said that you could gain 32 spaces by doing the center aisle parking on Cardinal Drive. And I apologize, this drawing is not very large, but that's the area they're talking about. I wanted to see for myself if that could happen. So let's see here. And this is going to be-- I took aerial photographs of the five blocks between Beechland Boulevard and down at Flamevine and drew in what that center aisle parking would actually look like. What I found when I looked at the consultant's report was they omitted any handicap parking spaces, so immediately, we had to put those back in. And you can see, you put the center parking here, but as you approach the intersection, you've got to get back to where the roadway lines up with the median cuts. So this first page, there was a net of zero spaces being gained. You move a block to the south, and you can see there's nine spaces that you could gain here, because there's quite a bit of driveways in these blocks. So I'm going to go down to the next block. I didn't actually draw these in darker, but there's no net spaces in this block, because there are no driveways on either side. So you either have the parking on the sides or on the center. The next block, the same thing, but because of the driveways, you could net seven spaces. And then I'll show you the end again, where you-- there was no net gain here. As you come back, you have to transition back in, so your roadways line up. Now, one of the things that this HDR report talked about were the pros and cons of having the center aisle parking. The advantage is it says it provides 32 spaces. I actually found 16 because of the handicaps and the transitions back at the end. It says it will provide more space for landscaping. It provides some space for landscaping in the center, but it's going to eliminate some of the landscaping at the-- on the sides of the road at the intersections. And it says it will slow down traffic. Disadvantages, it will not allow for mid-block left turns, because the parking's in the middle, so you'd have to go down to the intersecting street and do a U-turn. It'll require U-turns at the intersections. I just pointed that out. And it could increase conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. Right now, if you park on the side and you're going to go to a shop that's on that side of the road, you get out of your car and you go straight to that shop. If you park in the center, you're always going to have to cross a lane of traffic, no matter what. And one of the others, it said costly to implement, and they gave those cost estimates there. We took their cost estimate and inflated it from the 2007 to date, and the cost of that, based on their numbers-- I didn't run the cost estimate, I just inflated their numbers for inflation-- is about $134,000 per block. For the six blocks, it's $670,000 to gain 16 spaces.
600 what?
$670,000. And that's in your backup memo, Mayor Howell?
Yes, sir, Mr. Falls.
So, again, I'll pull you back up here, just so you can see. If you're driving here, your traffic is right adjacent to the sidewalk. You lose these landscaped islands at the intersections. You do gain landscaped islands here. So it's probably a net, you know, no gain on landscaping.
Is that Cardinal Drive right there?
This is Cardinal Drive, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. That's really all I wanted to show you, folks. The study was done. It made some recommendations. The recommendations it made were make improvements at Sexton and Humiston. The city has done that. The city's added 52 spaces since 2008. We've kind of picked up all the low-hanging fruit. You know, to have a project of this size for the sole sake of gaining 16 spaces, if you want to do a streetscape project, that's one thing, but, you know, 16 spaces is not a huge increase for that amount.
That's a lot of money, perspicacious.
So with that, I'll be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have. The map that I passed out to you again is just-- let's see here.
Monte, you might want to address those side streets as well.
The side streets where we have the no parking zones?
Yes, sir.
This map here, this is at the north end of the parking district, near the Vero Beach Hotels, Cypress, Banyan, and Acacia. A lot of these roads are now posted no parking at the request of the property owners. And as you come off Ocean Drive, after you pass the first couple of properties, this is all residential, and these residences have requested the city to post no parking signs so people don't park in their front lawns and adjacent to their homes. We asked all the businesses along here if they would be in favor of removing the no parking signs, and we had one business in this location on Banyan that did do that. There are-- there is room for seven additional spaces in the right-of-way there. And this map just scrolls on down, and you can see all the public parking in that Central Beach District. With Humiston Park, where we gained spaces in this area, and we also gained some along the front when we did that. And then Sexton Plaza, we gained a few spaces up here, but not quite so many.
It'd be a net gain, you know?
So we definitely don't want to go into residential areas on Acacia, Banyan, and Cypress, because one of my friends lives over there, and he would not be happy with me. But the-- what about the ones that are on the commercial part?
Councilmember Zudans, we contacted all those folks, and the city doesn't put no parking signs in front of any property unless it's requested to by the property owner. And they might have had an issue with someone parking there, tearing up the grass, you know, causing the sight-distance problem. So we have reacted, all those no parking signs, to a request from the property owner. We contacted all the businesses, and only the one on Banyan was in favor of removing the no parking signs.
Mr. Falls-- Is that city property, or is it their property?
It's right-of-way, but the city looks to the property owner to maintain that property out to the edge of the road.
Okay.
As you do at your home, you maintain out to the road. So that's why we've reacted to their requests. If we remove the signs and we start having people park there and the grass gets, you know, rutted up, it's going to be hard to look to them to rectify that.
Do you also think that people might get-- I know you would continue to have signs down the road, maybe a few 100 feet, 200 feet down the road in the residential area, but do you think it would create a situation where people would kind of assume that you can just park on the side of the street, and now you're in somebody's yard?
Well, we do have it signed now. So we actually removed the signs in the area there on the first property, just west of Ocean Drive at Banyan on the north side. The rest of them, the signs are still in place.
Would we have to put any kind of material down, like shell rock or something, to keep-- I mean, because obviously, it's going to-- at some point, it's going to rut and turn to mud, like you said.
I'm kind of going to watch this one and see how it turns out. It just depends on the amount of use it gets. You know, there's some grass parking lots that churches use sometimes because of the infrequent use. If these start getting daily use, it's going to be an issue. And I'm sure when we go back to those folks and say, "Hey, this is your maintenance responsibility," they may tell us to put the signs back up.
What if the-- that's an idea. I'm not saying it's good or bad. But what if the city offered to maintain those areas instead of asking them? If we're asking them to increase parking by letting us use that area, what if the city put down the gravel or whatever would be appropriate for that area?
If we could find a way to make an exception to the policy, you know, that's something--
The answer to the question is, yes, we could. Put some type of surface down there, you know, of-- I don't know if it would be just shale, but whatever would go with the street, because you don't want that separation from the asphalt to whatever the material is.
So can we at least just go back to those businesses and ask them? If the city was maintaining it, would you be interested in offering?
We can do whatever council--
I think that would be-- I mean, they would have to still agree to it, but then they wouldn't have the responsibility for maintenance. It wouldn't look bad. We would take care of it.
I can't say it wouldn't look bad. We would take care of it.
No, I trust that our employees can do it. Well, you know--
The key is, is it's green right now, so it's going to obviously change to a different-- but the answer to the question is, if that's what the council wants, we can contact those businesses.
How many spaces do you think that would be?
There's about 10 more spaces that could be gained.
On each street, or total?
Of the folks that we talked to, because of driveways and things, there's about 10 more spaces. And let's see, in front of the business, there'd be 10 more spaces that could be gained in front of the businesses that objected to removing the signs.
I think anything's helpful at this point.
We'll be happy to--
At least ask them.
We'd be happy to talk to them. This might be a test case force to see how that would work out.
I have a question. Is there any other city property, I mean, I'm looking further to the south, that can be utilized for parking?
Well, you have-- kind of have the same thing west of Cardinal. There's some commercial use here that you could use. But what we see right now, if you go out there, Cardinal Drive has spaces along that road that get utilized less than Ocean Drive, because they're more removed from the Ocean Drive. If we could find a way to fill up all of Cardinal Drive before we went back and started adding these, these spaces along Cardinal just don't seem to be--
Much demand.
--at full utilization. Yes, sir. But the answer to your question is, once that Cardinal Drive would get filled up, we could do the same thing down there west of Cardinal.
And again, I'm not familiar with Barrier Island as much as some of the others up here are, but the open space there on Flamevine Lane and Cardinal there, is that public property or is that private property?
Right here?
Yes, sir. Because I know that, you know, that seems to be available on a fairly routine basis. And it's a kind of a excess--
Let me go back and look at this one. It's privately on parking lot.
Is it private?
Is that the Magic Market?
No, that's Polo Grill.
Polo Grill, okay.
Is there any way that we could do an agreement with Polo Grill for access?
Actually, it's not just Polo Grill. It'd be with the landlord of that property, and there's about five or six businesses in there. And they have a big sign that says towing right now.
But have we pursued that at all in the past?
No, we haven't. Because once they put up the towing signs, we get the message that it's--
Is that right here?
It's the one over across, what is it, the Laughing Dog area?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just south of that.
One south.
Just south of that.
There you go. Yeah, those are, again, and Mr. O'Connor can speak to that, he's talked to some of those business owners about public use of private parking spaces.
The challenge is, Tony, is that they use it for the people that are in business there, plus their customers. And you open it up, it becomes an employee parking lot.
Okay. I'm just entertaining ideas.
Any questions for Mr. Falls?
Monte, I thought you did good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think there's a reason to explore some options and really appeal to the business owners here. We've got a lot of business owners in this room tonight, and I think everyone here recognizes that there is a significant problem with individuals being able not only to access the businesses here, but, you know, to simply be able to use the beach at certain times. And while we don't feel that pressure necessarily during the summer, we will here shortly. And so, you know, in that particular scenario, it's Laughing Dog Gallery, Polo Grill, et cetera, you know, in all sincerity, the spaces are really only utilized till 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. So there, I think there's an opportunity to explore some sort of shared parking with some of these businesses, given the fact that we just simply don't have-- we can't create parking spaces out of thin air right now, so, anyway.
While we're talking about that area, it was pointed out to me last Saturday, and I hadn't necessarily thought of it this way, but that area that the new church, that Pocket Church, takes up used to be used by the farmer's market. So we have to be careful. I think we're seeing-- we're beginning to see the revenge of infill. That's the problem. We have to be really careful about infill. I warned about that a while back. Have to be careful. And while we don't feel that pressure necessarily during the summer, we will, uh, here shortly. And so, you know, in, in that particular scenario, it's Laughing Dog Gallery, um, Polo Grill, et cetera. You know, in all sincerity, um, the spaces are really only utilized till five or six o'clock. So there, I think there's an opportunity to explore some sort of shared parking, um, with some of these businesses. Given the fact that we just simply don't have, um, we can't create parking spaces out of thin air right now, so.
While, while we're talking about that area, it was pointed out to me last Saturday, and I hadn't necessarily thought of it this way, but that area, um, that the new church, that Pocket Church, uh, takes up used to be used, uh, by the farmer's market. So we have to be careful. I think we're, we're seeing, we're beginning to see the revenge of infill. That's the problem. We have to be really careful about infill. I warned about that a while back. Have to be careful.
One of our takeaways, we will contact those businesses again and tell them, offer to maintain the property out in front of theirs for parking spaces. As if that'll get.
Yeah, thank you.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, this time we'll take, uh, Mr. Caesar Mistrata. He's gonna discuss parking Ocean Drive. Uh, this was sponsored by Councilwoman Laura Moss. And this is one of our 10-minute presentations.
Thank you, Mayor Harold. Thank you Laura for sponsoring us and thank the rest of the council. Uh, I've been at, I'm co-owner of James Stringer Gallery at 3465 Ocean Drive. My name is Caesar Mistrata. I've been there for seven years and I have to be honest. In seven years, I have seen very little being done to take care of our very, very serious parking problem. And I must, once again, bring up the fact that the major reason, especially where I am, is the hotels. I have been involved with businesses in other cities, other states. I don't understand how businesses of that size get a CO without making sure that they provide parking for their employees. And I've heard why it was done 20 years ago, that we wanted these hotels in, but it is very seriously hurting the small business. And I believe that the council has to do something, some way to allow or to, not force, but to try to coerce the businesses, the large businesses, to get parking for their employees. It's not the employees' fault. I'm not trying to blame the employees. They need to park somewhere. But I have to tell you something. I took pictures the other day. September is the slowest month of the year. There was not one spot available in front of my gallery or in front of M. Cooper or in front of Lee Jewels or in front of M. Maison, in front of Charles Schwab. The slowest month of the year. And they were 70% hotel employees. I know ordinances have been passed in other cities that forced the businesses and the employees to find parking elsewhere. And I, I heard, I understand and correct me if I'm wrong, that this, going back to three-hour parking was a limited time period that the hotels had to come up with some type of solution. Have they? I haven't heard anything. Certainly haven't seen anything. I think that our parking problem is not one solution. There has to be many different avenues that have to be explored. I appreciate the fact that some parking is being available on side streets. I think that's very important. Cardinal Drive, it's a great idea, but again, the dollars may not make sense. You may be better off spending the money on a parking lot somewhere. I think valet parking has to be explored. I know people are against it, but I have to be honest, it's gonna be our only survival. It's been done in other towns. Del Ray just did it. Many other towns have done it. And it could be an answer because that will discourage the employees from parking. Again, they can't be penalized. They have to find a place to park their employees. Uh, I know there was talk about the farmer's market. I'm not affected by the farmer's market, so I'd rather not speak about it. I'm not against the farmer's market. Do they create a parking problem? Maybe they do for two and a half hours on a Saturday. We have a seven-day-a-week problem, not a two-and-a-half-hour problem. And that is a very, very small problem. And I think it's unfair to, I think it's unfair to penalize the farmer's market. It's a good thing. Maybe it does have to be moved, but let it be moved with time for them to organize. I understand they're gonna, I don't know if it's true, but they were gonna be eliminated immediately?
This is totally untrue.
No.
Is that untrue? I'm glad to hear that, but that's what I was told.
False narrative.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I was told. Again, I'm not involved with it, so. The thing is, is that there are many different problems and I think there are many other solutions. And I really do think that the town owes it to the businesses on Ocean and Cardinal to do something about this. And I frankly sound like a broken record. I've been here many years before, speaking the same thing. And I have to ask, please, do something for us. It's very urgent. Our businesses are suffering terribly. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mistrata, just, this is the, I don't know who's, this is a personal thing for me. The shared parking agreements, which allows for businesses to be stuffed between two other businesses.
That's a joke.
I, I'm not for it. I think.
It's a total joke. And I'm suffering from it because there's a restaurant being built on my property. And frankly, how that was allowed to pass is beyond.
It's shared parking agreement.
Beyond comprehension.
And kiosk, what are your thoughts on kiosks?
Yeah, I think kiosks could be, you mean parking kiosks?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I think that's a very good thing to explore. And it's really easy these days. It's really easy for someone with their phone, they could just put in for the parking. And I think, again, I'm not looking to hurt the employees because it's been in the paper. I don't, I'm not looking to penalize employees, but the employees aren't gonna park if they have to pay.
And I don't feel like you're, you're saying anything that's demonstrative to them, so, you know. It, it takes all kinds of ideas and it takes all kinds of solutions, as you said, so.
I know we explored valet parking. Apparently that didn't work. I didn't think it would.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, we, we did. We had, uh, two companies that looked, uh, and we drove them around, showed them some, where they could do some parking, I hate to say shared parking, but they could lease spaces from, like banks and local businesses. But they just could not make it work even during our season.
Right. I am, I mean, just to show you how serious this is, you know, uh, seven times a year, I'm an art gallery. I do an exhibit. I have 70 to 100 people coming to my gallery between the hours of four and nine on a Thursday night. I'm signing a new lease of my landlord. And frankly, we've, we've lost half our parking. And once a restaurant goes in, we will have zero parking. I am going to be paying $43 an hour to the fine police department to monitor lot. My landlord has agreed to allow that. When I do an exhibit, I'm gonna have a policeman there monitoring our lot to make sure that people that aren't coming to us or the other tenants aren't there. It's a matter of survival. But I have to pay $200 every time I do an exhibit. It's not right. But it's a matter of survival. But that's a very small answer and that's only an answer for me.
I agree. I, I think what you said about it being multifactorial, it, there's not one thing that solves it. So we gotta find as many spaces as we get. The, one, one of the problems with, with the hotel parking, and again, I don't blame the hotel employees either. They have to work. They have to, they have to go somewhere. But they tend to use up, um, the all-day parking spots that are to the south at Homestead Park and across the street from that. Because you don't have to go out and check it every three hours. Or they use other spaces and they go and they, they move it to different spaces. So we have to find a solution that actually works for them, that doesn't cost them anything. And one of the things that, that I've thought is part of the solution is to have, have shuttles that run, a shuttle that runs just back and forth between J.C. Park and South Beach Park. Because there's two overflow lots there where you have a whole bunch of spaces that are not being used. But the only way that people will actually use those is if there are no unpaid all-day parking lots, parking spots sitting there. So there is a, there probably is a comprehensive solution to this. And I personally want to see that happen. It's one of the things I talked about when I ran for city council. And I want to see a solution. And hopefully, we're, we're gonna be the city council that not just sells the electric, but does something positive for, for parking.
Thank you. Yes, I know that, you know, years ago, we tried the shuttle. It didn't work because the hotels did not encourage their employees, whether it was through an incentive program or a penalty program, did not encourage their employees to use the shuttle, so it, the shuttle was empty all the time.
So the, the issue with that, from my understanding, was that if you tell employees that they have to use the shuttle.
Right.
That means that the minute that they park their car, they're on the clock, okay? And then there's a liability issue if something happens to them between there and when they get to work. So you have to make a, a situation where they voluntarily choose to use these other lots. And there, there, I think there is a solution to it. It's multifactorial, like you said. So I'm gonna keep working on it. I know that Councilman Sykes is very much one of this, to be one of his big issues. We can't talk to each other outside these meetings, but I think we're both gonna be working on this. And hopefully, we come up with something that makes it better at least, mitigates the problem. I don't know that we can solve it, but we're gonna try.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mistrata.
And just for the community, there, there are benefits to the farmer's market beyond the, the joy of the farmer's market itself. The farmer's market is sponsored by Ocean, by Oceanside Business Association. And one of the events that they sponsor using the proceeds from the farmer's market is our Christmas parade. So thank them. I thank them for that.
Uh, I also want to mention too, you know, I know a lot of you, I recognize a lot of faces in here tonight, um, from the farmer's market, a lot of vendors here. And while we lead into public comment, um, you know, I want it to be known that no one here has said anything along the lines of, we want to do away with the farmer's market. All of us up here truly understand what the value of that is for our community. We're, we're also trying to, it's a tough job. We're trying to solve parking issues for our other businesses, um, who need to survive here because we want this town to remain vibrant and the same Vera Beach that we all love. Um, so when you're coming up here, um, please know that the intention is not to kill the farmer's market, but moreover, we're looking for solutions from you, from the public. If you have some ideas about how we can solve some parking problems, bring that to us because we're not here to take away the farmer's market.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question I see.
Sure, let us open public comment and then you can be first up here to the podium and we'll, we'll queue up here on the wall. I know we got some.
Well, we, we, just, just because nobody can hear, like, nobody will be able to take minutes or anything, but thank you. Yeah, what'll happen is we'll open it for public comment. And then, um, there's also, that would be on this issue. There'll be general public comment coming up. So if it's more generalized, if it's not about this particular issue, that's coming after. And, um, so whichever one fits your, your question. Uh, we'll queue people up, so.
Unless anybody's got more to discuss about it, we'll just open it. Public comment? I see Mr. Bankard there.
Yeah, my name is Al Bankard. I'm a real estate broker in town. I don't have a business on Ocean Drive, but I've been working on the parking issues and promoting Ocean Drive, uh, probably for about 20-plus years at this point. Okay, um, there's a lot of different information flying around, so let me see if I can answer some questions. I'm, I'm vice president of events for the Oceanside Business Association. I am also the treasurer for the Oceanside Business Association. The OBA was founded by retailers with the objective of bringing people to Ocean Drive. And we've been very successful doing that, obviously. Because we do have a parking problem. We've also worked the pro, parking problem, quite frankly, for about at least 10 or 15 years. And spent a lot of time talking about it and having come up with great ideas. The farmer's market was put on Ocean Drive to bring people, just like the concerts are, just like the sidewalk sales that we do, just like the banners that are put up, just like the other decorations that are there and the parades. The idea is to make Ocean Drive a destination for people for shopping and for community activities and for enjoyment. And it looks like we've succeeded on that. The confusion on the farmer's market is we were called and told that we could no longer go back to the birthplace of the farmer's market, which is the parking lot on Ocean Drive. The, we took a look at it when we heard that, then next Saturday, I went down with the manager and we tried to figure out how we could possibly keep the market going if we did not have that parking area. And the answer is, we don't believe we can. And here's why. The crowds that we get during the, during season are four to five times what we have right now. And anybody who drives A1A understands how that can be possible because the amount of business, amount of people that are in this town during season is four to five times what we have now. The number of vendors, there's 24 vendors who we can't figure out where to put. Now, I was there, uh, this Saturday, I sent out an invitation last week to any of the council members who wanted to come and meet with me and walk the park and take a look at how things are laid out and why we don't think we can go into the park. The reasons are, are really pretty simple, but it takes some experience with logistics and really walking it and looking at, can I put somebody there? Can I put somebody there? Can I put somebody there? The fact of the matter is, the south end of the park, which does have electricity and it has the pavilons, it also has a four-foot sidewalk. Four feet is not wide enough for more than two people walking next to each other. Think about what the market looks like during season. You just cannot put that type of crowd through that one entranceway and walking along those sidewalks. There's also ornamental, uh, flowers, trees. It just doesn't work on the south end of the park, as far as the crowds are concerned. As far as the vendors are concerned, they can't get their products in because we can't put vehicles in there. There's just too many obstacles. So the south end of the park just doesn't work. The sidewalk, last Saturday, the sidewalk was having problems with the crowds. And we're not anywhere near season. You have to remember, we have people with walkers, we have people with canes, we have strollers, we have people with their dogs. You need a big, open space for people to be able to walk. Now, the mayor and Councilman Moss both came last Saturday and we took a look at the situation. The south end of that park does not work. The north end of the park is a possibility. The only problem is, it's not a possibility by October 1st. Because the problem is, is you've got grass, you've got no electricity, you know, you've got no water on the north end of the park. And the current entranceway, what we're talking about on the north end of the park is by the Driftwood. And it's where there's a county, uh, there is a road that's been left open so that we can do beach replenishment, so that the trucks can go through. The thing is, it's just not wide enough for the crowds that we get during season. And you've got a whole grassy area, which will be absolutely destroyed if we start bringing in vehicles nowadays, vehicles onto the grass for the vendors to set up. So it just doesn't work. There's also no electricity and no water there.
Mr. Bankard, um.
That area would be a great area for it. It really would work. But it's gonna take money and somebody investing in it to do it. And we're, we'd love to do it. We'd love to see it, okay? Because it would give us more room as well. And frankly, if you put a bandshell in, we wouldn't have to pay for the stage when we have the concerts. And, you know, it would work. The thing is, if we have to cut back the market to the level that can be sustained during season on that area, from a treasurer's point of view, we're in serious trouble. From a market manager's point of view, I'm not sure we can keep the market manager because our salary's gonna be cut significantly. I don't know where we're going to find the extra funds for the Christmas parade, St. Patrick's Day parade, the concerts. They all operate at a loss.
Mr. Bankard, um.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. So what, I wanna, I wanna reiterate, because I, I don't want to belabor anything. Um, what the council suggested, um, last meeting was that we have the, uh, the vendors on the sidewalk and also within the park. We didn't know if that would work during season, if it would even work off-season, but you know, you don't know unless you try, right? Mr. Bankard invited me to come to the park, um, and we kinda surveyed the area. In, in my mind, I've been to that park, I remember when they had the hamster wheel, you know? I mean, when you get your fingers caught in there as a kid. And, um, but in my mind, the sidewalk is so much bigger than what it really is. So while we're standing there, um, a man in a, in a, I guess, an electric scooter, would you call it?
Yeah.
Was it a four-wheeler?
Came up.
He was having, he was able to do it, he was having enough trouble negotiating between the tents on the sidewalk. But what, what we have to consider is, oh, um, you put that man on the interior of the park on that four-foot-wide path.
Sidewalk.
And now you've got, you've got vendors set up on the edge of the path and now you've got nowhere to go. So, you know, people can't step off and get out of the way. It would be an issue. So what we did, I'm not gonna get in too many details because we still have a lot of talking to do about this. And we're gonna talk with Mr. Falls about this. But we, we did go to the northeast corner of the park, which is, uh, completely unutilized right now. And the idea was, I said, hey, Al, look, here's, here's what I'm thinking. And it would have to be planned and, um, it would, and it takes money, as you said. But, um, what we were talking about is the possibility of making a, uh, walkway that's wide enough that would meander kinda up into that northeast portion and, and wind around a bit and, like I said, this is in its infancy. And then come back around and make it so that you, you could facilitate all 60 vendors total?
Yeah.
And, um, you know, electricity, that's no engineering feat, so no big deal. Uh, but while we're standing there, we're overlooking this beautiful view of the ocean and the dunes and everything else. It would just be a matter of, uh, figuring out how it might work. If, what kinda turf you need, again, Keweenaw or something like that. But I don't wanna get too far, too far in depth with it because that's, like you said, by October 1st is.
It's not gonna happen for the season.
So, so anyway, that, that was what I wanted to say.
Why not?
It's just too soon. I mean, we. It's just too soon. I mean, we've got to, we've got to have somebody out there to measure it and then price out the materials and the labor on it and.
Don't we have a whole crew of people who do that all the time? Landscaping and?
Exactly. I agree.
Well, there is a minor function of money here because we say electrical is no big engineering feat. It could be pretty expensive putting underground utilities up in there. And, you know, how we put the drive, pouring concrete in that park, that could be done. I mean, we could get a contractor or whatever to do that, so.
I just, I don't see it, I don't see it having that quickly done correctly. That's all. I'm not, I know we have a parking issue. I know that we're charged as a council to look at the benefit of all people, not just a group of people. And that's tough, as you said, Vice Mayor. But there. I just want to say, a little bit of, a little bit of thought and a little bit of action might even make something even better. That would actually be the most unique farmer's market on the east coast of Florida, I think, personally.
Oh, it'd be fine. It would be fabulous. I mean, we're listed number 11 in the nation right now by One Magazine.
Yeah, well, that would go.
You know, it's, it would be great and it would also be available for other uses. I mean, I'm sure the art club would love to run their thing in there on Sundays.
If somebody could give us a drawing of what's being discussed here, then we could have our engineers look at it if, you know, unfortunately, we're not at that discussion.
Like I said, I don't want to get too in-depth because we just, we just talked about.
Yeah, and we, I mean, it sounds like a great idea. The only question is how to implement it. The thing is, for this season, we've got a problem. We need the parking lot to continue to have the farmer's market on Ocean Drive and to be able to have a viable farmer's market to handle crowds that are four to five times the size. And, you know, as far as the sidewalk is concerned, in front of Hummus and Park, quite frankly, that was my idea. About five or six years ago, I proposed that we move out of the park, out of the parking lot into the front of Hummus and Park because we had one-fifth of crowds during the off-season. And it also freed up the parking lot, quite frankly, for the beachgoers. And we thought, hey, this is a nice win-win. But I, I'm a trainer for Tony Robbins. I worked 25 years in logistics. As a trainer for Tony Robbins, we handle crowds of 10-plus thousand people. And we have them going around booths and try to get them in and out of convention centers and et cetera, et cetera. So I've got a little bit of idea of what it takes as far as sizes to handle crowds and where your entry points are, where your choke points are and the rest of the things. And that's why I'm saying there's just no way we can move the farmer's market out of the parking lot during season and still have a viable farmer's market there.
I hope we can ease some minds here. I mean, there's no intention of moving out of the parking lot until we can find a viable solution that people are happy with. I mean, I think that, I do think that this really does make a lot more sense long-term and for the benefit of the community, could be used in so many other ways besides, you know, the 7:00 AM to 1:30 PM on Saturday.
12:30.
Okay, well, I mean, there's breakdown and there's other things that are going on there. And we know you're a point person, you know, for the farmer's market. It would be helpful, you know, as we work with Monty, to come up with a plan of what costs associated with doing something, to put in some infrastructure to support this would be. If you could tell us some more of the kind of demographics of your specific vendors. For instance, you know, Frank is out there every Saturday selling ribs. Frank's got a huge grill, so it makes more sense for him to be closest to the road because he's got to tow that in. And surely, as a community and a farmer's market, you know, we can all work together to make this thing work. So I know not every single vendor, you know, needs water and perhaps not even electric. So if you could tell us out of the 60 in season, really how many, you know, need to plug into something, those kind of things would be helpful as we explore the best way to set this up with you all.
We can definitely do that. I mean, with planning, we can find a solution. There's no two ways about it. It's just that, you know, by October 1st.
Well, again, I don't know why everyone's saying October 1st. I don't know where that arbitrary date came from. We know that people start to come back in town. We get that. No one's suggesting that this thing moved by October 1st. But I also don't think that, you know, we need to sit idle. Like, I'd like to see a plan of action here. And I don't think that there's any reason that, you know, if we can find the money to do it, we can all work together. We shouldn't be able to accomplish this, you know, certainly by 1st of the year. And that still leaves several months of farmer's market in season to have and show in this, in this new setting, so.
What's the best way to proceed? Mr. City Manager, should they meet with you and Public Works Director?
If you wouldn't mind, give us a sketch of what you envision at that end.
Be happy to.
And then we'll turn that over to our engineers and we'll work that out as to, you know, where you need, because you're going to know where you need your electrical and what water that you will need and then how the design of this sidewalk or whatever we're doing there. And if you can give us that design, what we will do is take it, work it, and then sit down with you again, or several of you, I'm sure.
We'll put together a draft and be happy to work with your folks and work through it. I'd love to go through with Monty.
Can I just make one comment? So the, so if, if we have like the tentative plan and we get the inventory of which vendors need which level of services and there, you can actually come up with a plan where the first thing you put in is the sidewalk before you do electric and water and all that other stuff, you may be able to put the people who don't need electric and the water on the internal part of the park, keep everyone out there and you may be able to, pouring concrete before October 1st, since we keep talking about October 1st, is not necessarily impossible. This is not an impossible feat. I think our, our, okay.
And nor do I necessarily think we need to pour concrete either. I mean, Riverside Park functions very well with a dirt trail. So I mean, I think there's all kinds of options and the aesthetic can be discussed, but, you know, I don't think we need to assume that we got to pour concrete, you know, to make this thing happen.
Yeah, we don't need to hash it out right today either. I mean, because this needs to be talked about.
Exactly.
And now, again, if you can get with, get us a draft or sort of a drawing, then we can set it with the engineers and figure out how to do it.
We'll get to work on it.
Sounds good.
Al, one thing I'd like to, as you're contemplating the heart of the possibility, is parking.
The, when we, when Hummus and Park was put in, remodeled, there was a large screaming from the community when some small area was taken for parking.
Well, we're looking.
I'm just, I mean.
And maybe that's why we're going to look at the plan and bring it back to the public and all. But, you know, if you have an area that's going to be used for public need and we have identified another need as well, maybe there's a win-win scenario in that development, so.
I'd love to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bankard.
Just for clarification also, I'm the one that made the call when the council indicated that next season you had concerns about farmer's market being in that parking lot. I did call the OBA and said, guys, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to issue the license for you to use that parking lot going into the next season. The council would like you to use Hummus and Park and the parking area or the sidewalk and that. So that phone call originated with me based on comments made at the council. They never did take a vote and I think that's practical, but sometimes I try to take the lead from your conversations.
There were negative comments made.
Well, regardless, we got a room full of people who all want to work together to find a solution, so, you know, maybe there's a positive benefit.
And this is a good way of doing it, yes.
And thank you, Mr. Bankard. And just as a reminder, for those who are going to speak, we really would appreciate if you would stay out of being repetitive about, you know, don't come up here and say, you know, we don't have enough room for 60 here or something like that. We want to keep it all new information, so. Mr. McCarthy, are you?
This is Bobby McCarthy, 3450 Ocean Drive, Bobby's Restaurant. Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to thank Monty and the people for addressing the situation with the no parking signs on the side streets. There's probably an answer, probably get rid of landscape, put Keweenaw down, there's probably something that's a viable answer there that will handle, will stand up to traffic. And I know there's probably about, I think I counted a couple months, there's about 27 spots if you count all those streets. Like we said, every little bit helps. And I said that a couple months ago. Now, I feel bad, sees eyes here. I watch every day across the street, employees from the hotel parking in front of his establishment in Belinda's at 2:00 in the afternoon. And they're there for the whole evening as the night shift at the hotel. So basically, he's losing his parking. I watch it every day, nothing to do about it. During the day, we have the meter maid out there and they attempt to, you know, you know, basically take care of the area and they just move the cars around and the meter maid is not, he's not there every day, trust me. I'm there every day. But it's, that's an issue that we've been talking about. I was thinking about Morgan Stanley and Wells Fargo. Their business terminates around 4:00. Why can't the hotel make an agreement with these people to use that as employee parking? Because after 4:00, those lots are basically empty. I know I pay my next-door neighbor, Cee Lauer, rental for his use, for my employees. I think it could be a happy medium. It would get a lot of cars off the street. I know they use it for special events and weddings alike at overflow parking. Why don't they make an agreement with these, as a good neighbor? If they have to pay a little rent, I mean, it gets cars off the street. I do it, I've been doing it for two years now. I don't like paying for it. What are you going to do? It's just part of, part of business. Now, I had a vision last week. You like visions?
I like visions.
This gentleman's, I'm waiting for his car. I was down at Fort Pierce on Second Street. Populated area, business, commercial, very impact area. And, and they've kind of lost their planning down there. The buildings were this big 20 years ago, now they're this big. Parking is at a minimum. They took an area and put a parking garage. Fits in perfectly. Obviously, it's strictly daytime business, it's all, it's very little retail. And I was thinking, talking about the parking lot at Hummus and Park, what if we were to abandon Dahlia Lane and put two-level, three-level parking? Get the right engineering, the right landscaping architects and put a parking lot and then with access off of Cardinal Drive into this multi-level parking lot, depending how high you want to go. I mean, that would, that would leave a lot of parking issues on Ocean Drive. Or, like I said at the last meeting, three of the biggest employers in the county are the hotels. Where are these people parking? Make that employee parking on the top levels. And obviously, it's not going to happen today, tomorrow, but it fit, it fit in perfectly on Second Street, which is, I'm talking, two blocks down to Sunrise Theater in Fort Pierce. And it's a heavy-impact area during the day. We're in the same situation. We're more, we're more retail slash office building. But it would fit in there and you could, and you could, I think architecturally, it could be done in such a way where it was not obnoxious-looking and it could fit in there. And I think in the long range, you're going to pick up a lot of parking spaces there. And you think about, you abandoned Dahlia Drive, access off of Cardinal into this parking lot. Now, I'm not an engineer, but it can be done. It's just a thought. I mean, if you want, you want to think four or five years down the line, like last time, we talked out behind Ocean Grill and I see Marcus here today, and you kind of bid on that idea. I mean, it's, it's a long-term plan, but I think it could work. And it wouldn't interfere with the farmer's market if you're going to redo the park across the street. I mean, I just think it's a, and have it done where it doesn't look obnoxious.
You want it aesthetically pleasing, which they've done in several cities.
Sure, Blowing Rock. You go to Blowing Rock, it's one block off me, you wouldn't even know it's there.
You wouldn't know.
Wouldn't even know. And that's a heavy-duty and intense, visited area, only for four or five months, but it's no parking. You know, you're familiar with it there. And I think it could be done. I mean, and basically, I don't know what it takes to abandon a side street, only talking about, what, 200 feet of road, but you're not really, because you're having access off of Cardinal into the parking lot. And with the right engineering, I think it could be done. And like I said last, I've got a friend of mine that builds parking lots in St. Louis, who lives in Johns Island. He'd be glad to step up and probably give you some, you know, some input into what could be done there.
And I'm not, I think it's a great idea and I'm not opposed to it, as long as we can figure out how not to affect the farmer's market and that can be done, I think.
Yeah.
I think. So we're going to be talking about that some more, I assume.
Yeah, I know, I'm a businessman and I don't, I don't know what financial benefit the farmer's market commands. I don't know, but I'm just thinking that maybe if I grow their space, what about Riverside Park? You got plenty, plenty of room, then with the farmer's market, the Riverside Park, you have plenty of room, plenty of parking. You could probably bring 150 vendors in.
I'll talk to you more about that.
Right, okay.
We've been, we went down, I'll.
Okay, good. Just a thought, you know, I mean, because it's a good, it's a good process, a good idea. It's getting bigger and bigger and you don't want to be handcuffed. Okay, we maxed out. It's just a thought. You know, the biggest weekend you'd have conflict would be Art in the Park Weekend. Other than that, it's pretty wide open, except in the boat show. But I mean, it's just a thought. They could get bigger and they could run it from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the afternoon. They won't be restricted. And it would not take care of, encroach on any parking on Ocean Drive.
Good, I like, I like all the ideas.
Yeah, just like I said, if you're down at Fort Pierce next time, just take a look a second. It's, it's not a big gigantic, they're not up eight levels. I think it's only three levels and it worked. I think done with the right, the right planning and the right architecture, I think, like I said, it would, it wouldn't be obnoxious on Ocean Drive. I think that it would, in the big picture, four or five years down the line, I think it'd benefit everybody.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
It'd benefit everybody tomorrow, but I mean, you know, or by October 1st, anyway.
Right.
That's the magic date. Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend you for paying for parking for your employees and Vera Beach Hotel, actually, some of the employees do park at the beach parking lot because I've been walking on Ocean Drive in the morning. And I do see employees, some of their employees walking back from the beach.
I see, and I could talk about.
The beach parking lot. And I think they also paid for the trolley, that experiment.
That didn't work. I don't believe that either.
Forty thousand dollars.
Do you think Frank, Frank Eaton wrote a check for forty thousand dollars? I'd like to see a copy of that.
Probably didn't.
I'd like to see a copy of that. And the other thing, it's like, even if you make a deal with Wilmington Trust Beach Bank, lay it up, make the employees work, walk two blocks to work. When I'm in Boston, in a snowstorm, weather's pretty, you're not walking from Riverside Park, it's two blocks. It happens in the Hamptons, it happens in Nantucket, it happens in Blowing Rock, it happens in Annapolis, Maryland. It's the way it works.
All right, we got to keep this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Jeff Edner. I had a really simple input and idea for the parking. If you want the employees not to park on that main strip, because I see, I get the farmer's about 5:00 in the morning and I'll see the employees at the park right there next where we're at now at the park. One thing we have to do with the Palm Beach Gardens Farmer's Market, they make the vendors park a mile away. And to keep track of that is when they write down your license plates. And I gave the idea, write down the license plate. So, for example, all the employees, they would, all the license plates would be on, you know, on file and there'd be a city official that would drive by that stretch and make sure there's no employees parking that, on that main spot. And if they wanted to park, because what I saw on the little image was that the street off of the main street, they had a lot more parking lot, but no one wanted to park there because people wouldn't want to walk a block or two. But if you wanted to keep it where the employees had some kind of check and balance, they know that their license plate's on file, they know there's someone checking that on a daily basis to make sure they're not parking, you know, where the customer should be parking. And so the customer's walking a couple blocks, the employees are walking a couple blocks, that would be a really good way to keep that in place. Besides that, I don't want to talk about the farmer's markets already did, but I'm a large gentleman, I'm 220 pounds. I actually pay extra money in the summertime, when I'm making hardly any profits, for the fact that my worst fear is trampling over someone. We have four tents in the summertime and then we have three tents in the wintertime, just because there's enough space. And Brittany and all the other vendors can, you know, can amend to that, that we're super busy. And my worst fear is turning around and knocking into an elderly lady and running her over. So with that being said, I spend extra money to have the extra space in summertime where the profits aren't nearly what it is, just so I have a peace of mind that I'm not going to run into someone and, you know, hurt someone. And that's the main thing. And there's a lot of elderly people that have strollers and wheelchairs. And then if, we're going to bring the markets where it is now, it's just, like everyone was saying, four to five times as busy in season. That's no joke. Like it's, I'm overstaffed. I pay, I have six employees working on a Saturday, just because I'd rather be overstaffed and pay extra than have the chaotic, I mean, if you've ever been to the sand before, I mean, we're just extremely busy. I know Ms. Boss has been there. I've seen Mr. Skies there before. I've seen Mr. Young there before. I'm pretty sure I've seen you there before. But it's just something that I really do feel strongly about. I would do whatever I could to get as much space as possible. And then with the parking, that parking garage, I didn't know it was a private parking garage right next to the market, but I've been parking there for the last two years. It's never, it's never full. So we could work out some kind of deal where we pay him some money, even if the vendors could pay extra money to use that parking garage, like I'm sure all the vendors would work out and be, you know, you know, would, you know, increase $10 a day to pay that man, because I understand he owns the parking garage and we could all park on the top floor. But that parking garage is zero use whatsoever. There's not a Saturday where I go there and I'm, I'm the only one there every week. With that being said, I drove six hours round trip coming from Fort Myers. I wanted to let you guys know that it is a big issue and there's a lot of, a lot of benefits with the farmer's market, as we all know. I just, I just wanted to let you guys know that with the check and balance with the whole license plate thing, if you guys, I don't know if you guys have thought about that yet, but that, for us, it works at Palm Beach Gardens. The vendors, we allow vendors to be coming in on scooters, so they literally make us park a mile away. So it's, you know, we, I know I have to, you know, leave my truck at 7:30 to go park it and get back before we open at 8:00. So that might be a solution with having employees park a couple of blocks away and keeping them in control and making sure that they are parking a couple of blocks away and not taking advantage of that.
I want to thank you so much for driving that distance to, you know, not make any money here today. We appreciate that very much. That is a suggestion that we've considered before, as I'm sure you've heard tonight. It's, I hate to single people out, but you know, the employee parking is a huge issue. That's probably the most significant factor that we're dealing with. And, you know, we're trying to look into the legality of whether or not we can require the hotel to furnish the information about who their employees are and what their license plate number are. Because yes, if we could do that and, and we could do that legally, then it would make so much sense to just have, you know, Ocean Drive, Cardinal Drive be off limits for parking.
Just a suggestion, you know.
No, appreciate that very much.
Any suggestion, any suggestion.
I just thought about it. I was like, well, we had the same problem with Palm Beach and this is what we did, to get everybody walking a mile away. And if you're a vendor, you gotta suck it up and do it. So, but thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Mike Galen. My wife Debbie and I have been vendors there for six years. And in the beginning, we used to do it year-round. So we were in the parking lot during season, then summer months, we're over on the sidewalk. We were at the northern end of it, down by the hotel there, Waldo's and all that. I think you guys have a big responsibility to ensure that whatever decision you make, you take into consideration the safety of the public. When we go there with a truck and a trailer, it's very easy in the morning at 6:00 to unload and get your stuff out and set up. But it's a whole different story at noon, when you have that winter crowd. We found it to be rather upsetting during the off-season to be blocking a lane of traffic on Ocean Drive, or Ocean Boulevard, whatever it is, to be able to go out there and load up all of our stuff. Because you've got traffic backing up behind you, you've got people trying to go the opposite direction, head-on into other traffic as they get frustrated. You've got pedestrians trying to walk between vehicles. You've got people parked in the angle parking there against the sidewalk, trying to back out of their spots because they want to leave. You've got people trying to get in those spots. You start having vendors trying to start saving the spots an hour, like at 11:00 in the morning, so that when it's time to leave, they can have their vehicle there to load up. So it's a real logistic problem, but somebody's going to get hurt. Because people start jaywalking across the road, people get impatient, and I just cannot imagine trying to do that over there during season. I think I would just quit going to the market. It's not worth the exposure and I think you're putting people at risk. And I think that the fact that I brought it up here today makes it part of the record. And they'll bring it up to you with an attorney if somebody gets hurt. So.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, is that something we should consider for the high season, to have a police officer there? Or is that something that the, you know, the OBA would pay for? Or how would, how would that work if we wanted to do that?
The OBA would have to pay for it because it'd be an officer based for that event. And so for any event in the city, for example, if you're going to have alcohol, you have to have an officer and those events pay for that. The OBA pays, for example, the, when they use our stage for their concerts and all of the activities that we do charge for those type of events.
Well, when you have discussions regarding the possibility of alcohol paving, for lack of a better term, part of the park, would you include that in the discussion, you know, the safety issue?
Have no problem. You have people here that are hearing it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmen and interested citizens, thanks all for showing up. I'm Nancy Cook. I have business on the beach and in favor of a lot of the ideas because I agree with a lot of people who said it's going to be a multi-pronged solution. I think, first of all, there's not enough parking and there's really not enough parking for the success of the farmer's market either. I have, people tell us all the time that they can't go to the farmer's market because they can't find a place to park either. It's not just, it's, we got a parking problem. We got a serious parking problem. And be sure, from my standpoint, I'm totally in favor of the farmer's market. It's a wonderful asset for the community, gives people things to do, place to go on Saturday morning. And I'm also thinking about the Riverside Theater because it's a tremendous asset for this community, tremendous asset. And there, the parky wouldn't be so limited in it. I believe that probably 90% of the farmer's market frequenters are, they are destination-based, you know, and they're going to go to the farmer's market, from what I hear. And I don't blame them. They're going to go to the farmer's market. So if it could be even more successful than it is because it is confined to a space that can't really handle it, then we should think about something else, but not anything like stopping the farmer's market, no way. I'm in favor of the commercial rightaways being parked on. Every space that, every place you can get a space, you really can't put a price on it. You know, reconfiguring properties that we already own, that are already drained and curbed is, I mean, I think that every space is invaluable that way. And putting like the, the parking that's at Riverside Theater is not paved. And if you did have, have to do any kind of, making the base more substantial, you can use the interlocking pavers that the grass grows in and you just mow right over the grass. I think there's a lot of solutions. I would also like, in front of my store, I would like parking meters because my store is, I'm right by the Casa D'Este, across the street from Casa D'Este. And the Driftwood and neither one of them allow any of their employees to park on their property. So guess what? We can't open our doors without our employees. So unless you give, you gotta add more spaces to give them somewhere to park. You can't say, you can't park here, here, or here. You gotta have someplace for them to park. You got to. Because we, I can't open my door if I don't have employees. And some of my employees have paid three, four, $600 parking fine tickets over the course of a year. Because you can't always leave and go move your car. You can't. If you're waiting on someone. And in the restaurant business, they're even, their wait staff is even less likely to be able to leave the table or five tables and go find a place when there's no place for them to find in season and they ride around and there isn't any place. So I'm all in favor of trying some real solutions, combine them, do everything you can to get a space wherever you can get it.
Do you think, I'm not proposing that we do this or don't do this, but what do you think the Oceanside business people think about those, at the south end of Hummelston Park, there's the lot there, and then the lot where we're talking about the farmer's market across the street? Those two lots are all-day parking. So they probably get taken very early by hotel or any employees because they don't have to go out and check, check their cars. So what do you think about just making those two lots, kiosk lots? Do you think that's part of the solution?
Where do you, where do you want the employees to park?
I want them to park at South Beach in the overflow lot and at JC Beach in the overflow lot there and have a shuttle that runs back and forth between those two lots along Ocean Drive. I think that if, if that's where they were willing to park and you had that shuttle, it would, you would have, I don't know, I have to go see how many spaces that is, but it's significant.
One of, one of the problems that I hear from, from employees is that a lot of, a lot of my employees and like the restaurant staffs and all are single working moms and you have to be where, if they call you from school, you have to go.
Well, there's a shuttle running back and forth.
Oh, there are. That's the problem. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but it has been forced by the employer.
Yeah. They're not going to do it unless they have to.
There's a solution to that too, but that is.
Yeah. I mean, you understand.
Yeah. We've got, we've got to, we've got to stop talking about this. I mean, I started talking about it long before I had a gray hair and even though you can't see my gray hairs, now there's plenty. And I would like something. I'd like to see some, some, something.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Against my better judgment, I want to bring up a subject that has been discussed a lot in the business community and I think that it perhaps could, it deserves being explored. I know there's a lot of pushback against, you know, making everything paid parking, but there is a concept of the business owner being able to install and pay for, you know, one of these high-tech systems to reserve, let's say, four to six spaces in front of that business. Anyone in the public is still willing to park in that space. They would just have to pay whatever the hourly rate is. So the thought is, there's still unpaid parking everywhere, but there are, at the business owner's expense, paid parking in front of those businesses, which theoretically would mean that they're going to be open more frequently than the spaces you're not paying for. So it's something to consider. You know, we got to look to other communities that have been able to alleviate to some degree these parking issues. And I know plenty of business owners down in Palm Beach who, you know, are up in arms with the fact that every other street's paid parking but Worth Avenue, the one where it should be. So we need to look at every single solution. It's been said many times tonight, but there is no silver bullet here, so.
Is there, is there an obstacle to that? I mean, do we have an ordinance that prohibits that from happening, Jim?
No. You can control parking. And we have names and phone numbers of firms that do, parking systems is what they're called. I'd be very happy to put any business owner in touch with those folks about doing it and seeing if there's a way of doing the revenue. The companies that we have talked to, and we've had several, we've had a lot of presentations. People in this room have attended some of those meetings. The guy that puts in a parking system expects, if he's going to operate it, a return on that investment. If he doesn't get the return on investment, then he expects somebody else to pay for that system. And they are expensive.
Or the return on investment is having theoretically, as Vice Mayor said, more parking space available for that particular store over a period of time.
Well, from his perspective, is how many times do you put your credit card across the thing and how much money does that generate? They're not going to put in a parking system when you have a parking lot with unlimited parking or, or the free parking around. The system and the companies we've talked to, unless there's someone, a third party ready to absorb that cost, they want to control parking in the total area in order to generate the revenues.
So if we had a, I'm thinking of, you know, an individual business owner, it would be prohibited as a result of the cost. But if you had a, an opportunity where a number of businesses could combine together to defray the costs, that may be something that would be more palatable.
Absolutely. We'd be very happy to set those meetings up with the companies that could come in and give those presentations. It's just a function of paying for those. And from the city's perspective, putting in a parking system for 50 spaces is not an issue. That could be done.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson, I speak to all of council and everybody else in the room, I guess. We have people who are for certain things and people who are against certain things, but it's come to a time where I personally believe we're going to have to make some, really, just some tough decisions and decide, either we're going to do something like the kiosk or the meters or, you know, some of these ideas that we've had, or we're not going to take action on anything, which is, that's status quo. That's what's been going on and nothing's being solved. So I've been talking a lot tonight. I apologize, but. Mr. Olson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, for those who don't know me, my name's Lee Olson. I'm the general manager at Waldo's Restaurant and I'm also a board member for the Driftwood Properties. Probably not going to be real popular about what I'm about to say. I love the idea of moving to market. Either over into the park or, like I've said so many times, Riverside Park. And I, and Bobby's had the greatest idea, and I've been thinking about that for years, of the same thing, abandoning Delilah and building a structure on a property that you already own. Just makes total sense. I mean, we've been here, I've been coming for these meetings and parking for about seven years. It's got to be solved. And, you know, putting in meters, moving things around, that's not going to solve the problem. The problem is, we've grown, we've expanded, we're all busier than we've ever been. So Vero Beach needs to get caught up with what's going on. I mean, we just can't keep kicking the can down the road. It's, it's got to be resolved. So I caught the very end of the whole paving down behind the north end of the property at Hummelston, moving the marketplace there. I think the Driftwood would have major concern of the fact that there's, there's 14 guestrooms right along that north end of the property. So if you have people out there at 6:30, 7:00 in the morning, setting up outside their windows, you might have some angry hotel people. So there's a little monkey wrench to throw in on that one. But I think it would be a general concern. You know, I mean, we're not just a hotel. We're a timeshare property. These people own, they have a stake in the property. They have a stake in the city of Vero Beach. Especially during season, there are people who may live in that unit for four, five, six weeks. So it's not just a week that they're there during season. We have people that live on property for 14 weeks. They may not be in the same unit. They move around. But they consider themselves winter residents of Vero and they've been timeshare owners for 20-plus years. So we're kind of a different animal as opposed to a regular hotel. Our people love the farmer's market. And I know they would ride over to Riverside Park to utilize it. It's a great asset because it's right next door. But I think the last time I counted, there's 47 regular parking spaces and two handicapped in that parking lot on a Saturday that's being occupied from 7:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon. And I can tell you on my figures, my lunch on Saturday now no longer picks up until 1:00, 1:30. We lost an hour or somewhere along the way. It used to be, before Saturday enforcement was in place, we would get busy, we'd be running and grabbing bags of ice for people who came from the market and wanted to keep their vegetables cold. And we don't have that anymore because of Saturday enforcement. So keeping the market in Hummelston Park, excellent idea. Moving at the Riverside, even better idea. Building a parking garage, win-win for everybody. And I know money and this and that, but, you know, for seven years, we could have been putting away $100 a day and had a parking garage built by now. So that's, that's my input on this. But I would be real careful on, you know, obstructing that north end as much as it sounded to me and not taking our hotel guests into consideration. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. How you doing? My name is Scott Gussen. I am a Vero resident for 29 years. I have been a business owner, but not a vendor as of yet. But I talked to Brittany last week and I'd like to become a vendor, so my interest is also the parking. Val, I think you had a great idea with the shuttle. Awesome. Lee and Bobby, also a great idea. Mr. Mistrada, I believe, hit the nail on the head. And let me just say why, as far as valet parking. I lived in La Jolla or over the hill, as we called it, East La Jolla in Claremont, for about 15 years, San Diego area. I was there in the 70s. In the 70s, it took about three minutes to drive through La Jolla. I went there about seven years ago to visit my friends. Now it takes 45 minutes. It's insane. The hills are all gone, all, you know, houses everywhere, no property. What's that have to do with Vero Beach? Basically the same thing. I saw La Jolla multiplied by 20 times and valet parking is what they do now in La Jolla. I don't know if that'll work, but here. I don't know if that'll work, but here, but in La Jolla, it's awesome because you can't get through town, you can't walk through town. 9:00 PM at night, when you're walking down the beach, there's benches every 20 yards. Myself and an old friend walked a mile down the beach to Mission Beach, every single bench had people in it. So as far as crowds, 20 times more than here. So valet parking is a great issue, and Val, the shuttle is a great issue, and the only other thing I was going to say is, and it's already been commented on, as far as vendors, how many of us have electricity use, and how many do not have use? And when we say October 1st, and Mr. O'Connor says January 1st, let's find a happy medium, maybe December 1st, and I know we've been here for a long time, so I'm done. So be that as it.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, sir.
Ryan Bass, I'm the chairman of the Finance Commission. I'm here before you, actually, probably not to make the best decision, but I'm actually going to ask you guys to give me more work. We looked into the kiosks on the Finance Commission probably a year and a half ago. We sent it back to you guys, but what I would say is that, you know, there's a lot of good ideas being thrown around, but all of the ideas are worthless if we don't actually do something. So I'd ask you guys to just take a step in faith and actually just take one of the ideas and just get your feet wet. You know, perhaps maybe the city residents getting to park for free, so it's not mass chaos that, oh my gosh, Vero Beach is charging for parking now. The city residents get parking medallions, they can park for free, everybody else can use a kiosk. I think that kind of slowly tampers it down. I think the idea of a parking garage is phenomenal, and, I mean, I see the county's here to talk business today, so it's probably a good time to hit Jason Brown up, maybe, you know, look, they benefit from the hotels, maybe we can get them to help with the cause of a parking garage? He's here, ask him, I don't know. But I would just plead to you, if you guys need help on the parking issue, our commission would be more than happy to continue to explore that, and let's get something done, because obviously the community greatly wants it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Thank you.
I want to know who that guy is. Hi, I'm Kathy Traggett, I've been in Vero Beach since 65. I opened a store in 74. We had parking meters on Ocean Drive, did you all know that?
No.
Oh, yeah, parking meters. And the city fathers decided that the town would be friendlier without them. Now we have mass chaos, because every day of the week, I have every restaurant employee, every hotel employee, everybody that works on Ocean Drive, up and down the streets, in front of my store. They move their cars every three hours. I dare say, if any of your businesses had people parking where you couldn't get your patients, and every three hours you saw whoever was blocking your patients move the parking around so they would not get ticketed. This is daily. This is not a Saturday morning problem. This is every day of the week. I have, I'm not going to discuss vehicles, but I have people that park in front of my business every day with coolers, with, I mean, I love surfing, I love swimming, I love all of that. They park for three hours, they unload their coolers, they go right to the beach, they come back and move their vehicles over one slot. This is every day of the week. I pay a lot of taxes, I own my building. I would pay for the kiosk in front of my store personally. Everybody in here that has a store would do the same. That would eliminate your problem of having to pay for them, which you have an obligation to us as citizens, equally as the people at the farmer's market. I mean, they're, you know, they're crying about something for three or four hours. We live here, we work here, I pay a lot of taxes, and every one of you guys probably have been in my store. It's a very, very nice store. The element I'm dealing with today is not the same element that was here five years ago. It's tragic. This Ocean Drive is a jewel. Your wife works in a place that they can't get parking on Saturday, am I right, Mayor? There's no parking there, is there, except for the garage?
Well, now that we have three-hour parking, they've got more time to stay at the beach.
You know what I'm saying.
I know what you're saying.
The gentleman that just proposed the kiosk, I mean, why is this such a big problem? Why is this something so difficult to try to implement? I'll pay for mine.
Well, I'll tell you what it is, is that some people don't like change, no matter what.
Well, I didn't like change, so they took them out when I was, when I started.
I understand. That's the first I had heard that there was a long time.
Yeah, I've been here a long time.
So we need to go back to the past.
You know what, sometimes the past didn't do that. And if you had my problem and my investment...
No, I agree with you. When my wife and I go to the farmer's market, we ride our bikes.
Okay, you have to.
We're not going to.
Fight the traffic.
Yeah.
I don't, I'd like to ask, I mean, you know, we keep kicking it around about the kiosk, it's kind of like it's ugly, it's bad, it's, what's the problem with the kiosk? Every upscale shopping area in the country, Delray Beach just implemented the same situation. They have a problem worse than we do. They just implemented it, it's fabulous, it's been working well for them.
Well, I like what the mayor said, that, you know, it's gotten to a point where we have to, so anytime you make a decision, if you decide that you want the kiosk, you're going to have a subset who's going to start a petition online saying, "We're getting rid of all businesses on the ocean," or, you know, like they did with the...
Yeah, but you know what, we're not doing all that.
I understand, we're not. But the problem is, is that it activates people against change, whenever you make any changes. I think, though, we're at a point where we just need to suck it up and make our decision and live with the consequences of it, because it's been enough time. And I'm serious, I want to be known as the city council who sold Vero Electric, got us out of what the people don't want to be in, and fixed our parking problem. Those are like the two biggest things that people complain about.
And every one of these people that have shops in here, you know, sooner or later, you have an obligation to keep Ocean Drive great. We do our best to do it. I think we do a fabulous job. Our stores are very, very upscale. They cost a lot of money to do that. You all owe us parking. We're so worried about the farmer's market parking. Well, that's Saturday morning. How about seven days a week on Ocean Drive with all the store owners? I own my building, Nancy Cook owns hers. Every one of these people take a lot of money in rent. We're not getting parking. Sooner or later, the businesses will go away. And if you think that won't happen, it will happen. You can kill a business, and that's how you can do it. And I think you all have an obligation to, is that my five minutes? I want meters, I'll pay for them. How about that? You can't beat that, can you?
Hey Kathy, just, just because I'm hard of hearing.
Yeah, you're not hard of hearing.
Hey, what was on Ocean Drive back in the '70s? Parking meters?
Meters.
Thank you.
They were there.
Thank you.
They were in front of my store, the gazebo, I started that. Goodbye.
Thanks, Kathy. So I'm going to, at this time, if we're not finished with, with public comment at this time, I just want to, I want to talk to council for two seconds. Kind of, I kind of feel like we've taken care of, once we're finished with this, we're kind of taking care of discussion of parking. Does everybody agree with that? The one that we moved from page two under B? And we moved it up?
Well, you know...
Yes, I do.
What I would offer the public, that if we have a number, you know, let's set a time limit so that they can self-regulate if they want to continue to talk about this for 10 minutes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying let's stop talking about it. What I'm saying is, bear with me. Have we, have we had a discussion about parking?
I think there's, we need a few more minutes for some council discussion, because I think people are going to expect some action items here.
I guess, maybe I'm saying this wrong. Usually we take a break at two hours, right? Five or 10 minutes, we're almost there. What I'm saying is, when we're done with public comment, we're done discussing parking, can we eliminate the one that we moved up and take our break? That's all I'm saying.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, do we want to have businesses who would like to have parking concessions in front of their storefronts, contact the city manager? Maybe, would you like, is that a good way to handle it?
That would be fine, and I'll put them in touch with the companies that install the parking systems. And again, we have no problem with that. The police department can enforce those parking regulations, the tickets and that kind of stuff. And then it would be based on the usage, whatever contract they worked out with the vendor, on how they pay for the system itself. But we would enforce the parking restriction of the time.
Okay, so if any business who's interested in that, please contact Mr. O'Connor. That's cityofvero beach, C-O-V-B dot org. You can find his phone number and his email.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And he can just compile a list and move forward from there. Thank you, Councilwoman Moss. Yes, sir. I didn't mean to interrupt your whole thing.
No, I'll be quick, that's no problem. I'm Lewis Shakt with Shaq Rose here in Vero Beach. I'm a city resident, and just wanted to speak real quick about this issue. We've participated in the market since day one, we've been there for 10 years. I've had the exact same spot for 10 years on that parking lot. City owns the parking lot, we understand that. I'd just like to make a statement about local agriculture. I think it is a bold statement for this council to support local agriculture in any way it can. You might turn to your seal and notice there's still a grapefruit on that, it's just barely hanging on there, but it's still there. And, yeah. I think keeping the market, quite frankly, right where it is, is the best way to handle this. We started modestly, we've grown, a lot of people come down to that business district on Saturday morning because of Peter's honey, or Jeb with Point Setia's fruit, or my fruit, or my juice. We draw the community down there. I know Monty real well, he's well-educated at NC State, but putting this market in Humiston Park will tear up Humiston Park. Half of these people, including myself, bring trailers into that market. You're not going to take trailers into Humiston Park. You will have an uproar, trust me. And it will be from us, it'll be from residents on the beach. So anyway, I'd just like to make a vote for local agriculture. This is a big part of my business, it's a big part of these people's lives, and I appreciate if you would consider leaving it right where it is. And we're talking, you know, you have business owners stating themselves, this is two hours on a Saturday morning that they're really concerned about. I think moving it would be a mistake, and I think you'd just be wasting Monty's valuable time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Here still.
Little Mistrada.
And I can tell you, Mr. Shaq's produce, better than, better than 50% of the times that he's been there, I've been there at his produce stand buying the best citrus in the country. Farmer's market ain't broke, don't fix it. The, if you've been here long enough, it's interesting watching the cycles. And I was in City Hall numerous times when the business owners, this is 15 years ago, when the business owners complained that they had to pay an impact fee for parking, and the city had all this money, and they wanted it back. And the city made the determination, city council at the time made the determination, "Oh, we don't need parking." And they gave the property owners, store owners that were asking for the parking money that was sitting in the city treasury, ready to do something about parking, they wanted their money back, and they got it. And now we have no money to resolve the issue. You know, at some point, when enough people want parking spot, it'll become financially viable, and somebody will put it in a parking garage. But as for right now, farmer's market ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, Ms. Hedy. More public comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none, how does the council feel about a five or 10? 10?
Yes.
10, okay. So it'll take a 10-minute recess, we'll re-adjourn at 7:48.
Very good.